The strawberries. So they're organic and so strawberries are a tremendous amount of labor.
Camera and the microphones are on, so don't say anything too outrageous. For the meeting starts.
I don't know where the firm over yet. They don't go to school, so some of the first students don't go to school.
It would be good if they did.
They use headhundreds and I don't think Carl is using headhundreds.
They just like to tender on mostly annual, I mean some per annual. But they were not interested in the perennial strawberries.
They hired, I think, two or three.
Don't drink that stuff.
You wouldn't tell us to spike it.
He spiked it.
Wildlife is an issue. But they've done pretty well.
Where were you last meeting, Tom?
Ooh, wow.
Where was I?
That was blatant.
You're the only one I reported to.
Oh, he wasn't doing well.
And I, I baked cupcakes.
No way.
In a variety of flavors, and then you weren't here.
Get a chair.
Are you serious? I missed the.
I had strawberry.
You didn't take any?
I brought them last night.
She did.
I had Michelle.
I had a piece and it was also delicious. Somebody is eating the plate or somebody's.
Listen, we're three classes.
What?
That's what she was saying.
To dress the muscle for the right side now, but that's. And the left side was like a compens- yeah, compensating.
Twice, because I went twice. Yeah, it was misery last few days.
Cupcakes. Your cupcakes are good.
I got some. It was a beautiful cake from Michelle. And that was so fun.
Some of my desk.
And yummy.
On your desk here.
Oh. Remember, it was, it is recorded, so they all know about your.
Oh, yeah.
So it's seven o'clock, I open the meetings. October twenty first, two thousand twenty five. And I turn the meeting over to Pat Barber.
Pat Barber.
Thank you, good evening, everybody. Uh, we have a really, uh, full agenda this evening, so I would ask the committee members if we could confine our questions. I know everybody likes this meeting because the, the agencies come and they like to talk to them and stuff. But I'm gonna ask if you could, uh, confine your questions to vegetarian lines so that we're. So the first eagle that there with the corner doesn't.
Go to sleep?
To go to sleep on us.
Too late.
Alrighty, uh, first up tonight is lead readers, Jen.
Nice hats.
Yes. If you wonder what we've been spending our money on so far, that hats are. So we present, I guess, what we're looking for. Um, so we are asking for five hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty seven. Um, in the past few years, we've been spending in the neighborhood of anywhere from three hundred to five hundred on, uh, recycled bins for welcome gifts. Uh, little bags for the welcome gifts, um, paying for gift cards for local businesses. Uh, little, you know, honey or maple syrup or soap or things from local businesses. And this year, we're gonna start mailing letters to, uh, properties that have recently sold. So we're gonna be getting information about properties that have sold in Lee. And we're gonna send a welcome letter to them, so that means envelopes. And postage, I gather, we're gonna go postage through the town's machine, but I'm guessing that costs something.
We can keep track of it specifically.
Okay. Um, we also wanna get like either return address labels or a logo sticker, um, something like that. Continuing to buy recycled bins, gift bag stuff. We are starting to talk about participating in the nation's two-fiftieth, which would be fiscal year twenty six. And maybe the tree lighting and concert, we're exploring, uh, options with the other relevant committees and commissions. And then for fiscal year twenty seven, kind of the same kind of stuff. Um, and, you know, we've always talked about maybe having events where people can, you know, gather and get to know the new people, new people get to know established people. Um, kinda hard with a committee of four, but, uh, we would really like to do that as well, and I assume that that would cost money. So that is what we're doing and why we're asking for five hundred dollars. And we, we do hope to do some fundraising, but that's another conversation that we'll be having with the select board as to if we do fundraise, where do we store the funds? But that's another conversation.
Anyone have any questions for Jen?
Um, how many people did you? I don't know what you call it, assist touch? I don't know. Greet. Greet.
Yes.
Greet's better than touch.
So when we were. Retouch someone.
That kind of touches.
When we were able to, um, distribute welcome letters and gifts through the town offices, it was averaging, that was when Liz was on the committee, we were averaging about ten new residents a month. Going through the library, that makes an extra step for people. So it's dropped a bit, but we're hoping that, um, when we send the letters out, then, you know, when they come through their swoop through town to go to the town offices and do their business there, that they'll also swoop by the library. And we'll see how it goes. But I, I gather, actually, we'll have better statistics when we know property is selling. Now, that doesn't include renters, of course, but we'll, we'll get a better sense of, um, how many people are moving in or moving within.
So where do you get your information in terms of who moved in and?
Uh, when Liz was on the committee, um, it was a voluntary thing for new people to give us their information. Denise has offered to send us information about properties that have sold. Uh, and that's still brand new, so I don't have a lot of information on that.
Thank you.
Everybody else? Thank you very much. Now, we can plan to do the agencies first, but the agencies aren't here. So I guess Steve, we can move you up on the agenda if you'd like to.
Second, let's fire him, Steve.
Are we completely moving Steve up or is it about to start until the agencies show up or?
Does your, does your, uh, presentation have pieces or is it all one giant thing?
Uh, it can be however you want it to be. Cause there's like four different projects, so as long as I get through one.
Okay, why don't we get started? We'll see. Yeah. These people have been here all night, but.
Well, there we go, I can, I might as well get up now, the sun is going down.
Go back to your corner. What do we have? Casa.
Yes, casa, yes.
Alright, come on down. Are you Tara?
I am Tara.
Good evening.
Hello, thank you for having me tonight. Okay.
You're on.
Thank you, so my name's Tara, I'm with, uh, Corner Twenty Special Advocate of New Hampshire. Um, Lee has been very generous to us for several years now, and we greatly appreciate it. All of the funding that we get goes to supporting the advocates who are either residents of Lee or have cases in Lee. Try and keep it in the community so that you know that it's supporting kiddos in your area. Um, our advocates speak on behalf of the best interest of children in court. Um, it is required by New Hampshire state law for victims of abuse neglect, uh, children victims of abuse neglect to have an advocate, and we are the only nonprofit that does this. So we get the phone call first, once we've brought in finding, bull aside an advocate to the case, and from that point on, the advocate is there for the life of the case. Um, I'd like to say they last a year, sometimes they last up to four or five years. Um, D C Y F, parents, lawyers, people come and go throughout the life of the case, but the advocate never changes. And whether it's a case involving one child or a case involving four children or more, it's one advocate per case. So the advocates are visiting every child at least once a month, uh, twice if the children are older. Um, they're getting to know everybody in the child sphere, parents, foster parents, teachers, anyone who interacts with the child. And then they're taking that, writing a court report and giving it to the judge on what is in the best interest of this child. Um, our goal is always reunification at first. Um, if for whatever reason the parents are not going to be able to get to that point, then the advocates will advocate for, um, either foster placement, a relative placement is the next thing we go for, is there a grandparent who can take it? Is there an aunt and uncle who can take the child? Um, if that's not the case, then the child is up for adoption. There any questions?
Um, Casa's requesting a thousand dollars, which is level funding. Actually, all the agencies are requesting level funding. Did anyone have any questions for Tara tonight?
I'm all set. Thank you, then.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna crawl on, if I'm gonna hear it, say you're Fred.
Yes.
Come on down, Fred. Uh, Fred Wolf from Ready Rides.
Good evening, I live on High Road. Uh, I'm the Lee, uh, person on the Ready Rides Board. We provide transportation to medical appointments for seniors and disabled individuals in eight towns. Uh, Lee, one of those eight. Last year, we provided two hundred eighty-nine rides for Lee residents to and from their medical appointments. Uh, we're requesting level funding, uh, again, fifteen hundred dollars. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Got any questions for Fred tonight?
I'm all set. I've been here before, so.
Yes.
Yes.
I can say that we certainly, there are certainly plenty of Lee residents that make use of you because they come to the town administration office and the town clerk's office and inquire about how to get in touch with you.
Good.
Usually Denise Spears and you're away first.
And we're always looking for, for volunteer drivers, if you know anybody that has a lot of, or even a little time on their hands. Schedule is really flexible for drivers, you can drive when you want, whenever it's convenient, once a week, once a month, once every two months. Uh, always looking for drivers. So if you know somebody, have them give us a call.
It's a wonderful service for Lee residents.
Thank you.
Andy, I notice it says fiscal year twenty twenty-five in their document, they haven't received what we were gonna send them. This though is stamped August nineteenth, will we send them our last year's money yet? Did you get all that?
I think you have.
Okay, it just doesn't, it says we haven't on this, but like, so this is from August. So I wasn't sure if it was accurate or not.
Are the actual numbers on the budget worksheets actual?
Yes.
Then it has, okay, I'm pretty sure.
If the budget worksheet numbers are correct for actual, then everybody got the money. Thank you, Fred, appreciate it coming in.
Thanks very much, appreciate it.
Okay, so now the next group is till seven thirty, so now we do have nineteen minutes.
We might as well start with Mr., before Mr. Stephen, I won't throw you out again. Who would you like to start?
I guess I'll do Pete's first, since he's not here. Cemetery's short.
Cemetery's easy.
Is this, should I say FY seventeen budget?
FY twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven? Yeah, that one. All the way at the bottom.
How it works?
I'd really raise a lot, so it's just a lot of pictures to look at this year. That should be the PowerPoint.
Yeah, this is, uh, nothing.
Oh, oh, it is what it is. Oh, always what it is. It's not like it can't be spoken out loud, it's just pictures of stuff out here.
Do we have, uh, we don't have a tutorial?
Yeah, let me see if I got, oh, then. This is one that was set up to be active.
We didn't try this this afternoon, I had to take my daughter into a doctor's appointment, so that was all.
Well, you can try it anyway because I was trying to get the computer network to work here this afternoon. Waiting for Beckby to get here.
No sharing clause.
It's fine, I'll, uh, I'll do the cemetery budget first. I know there's a new member, so normally there's cemetery trustees who do this, not me. I had cemetery trustees to work for, so it's kind of, we all just did it together type thing. They went with level, or they did the three percent, so they raised it to two hundred and fifty dollars because the select board had put out a.
Yep.
Three percent increase, so they just went with their three percent to raise it. In the past year in the cemetery, we have, um, bought a fair amount of granite to redo the granite, parts of the granite fence down at Old Parish that have broken over the years. Uh, new corner markers so we can lay out a couple of the sections in Lee Hill that, um, had not previously been monumented, so we can pull off of them to find where people's, uh, graves are. Yeah, the shed is done. Uh, some of the bigger, like memorial stuff and things that they're gonna have to spend money on this year are gonna end up being the bronze medallions, the, the flag holders for the veterans, those aren't cheap and we have like five left. We've actually had a fair amount of veterans in the past year and a half, two years get, get interred at Lee Hill. Do you have any questions on the cemetery?
Are you getting more cremations than full bodies?
Yes.
And how much longer do you think you'll have enough space in that, um, Lee Hill cemetery?
Judging by the maps that I've seen, um, I mean, there'll be space to put people for a while, but as far as land that hasn't been bought by the people, that's filling up pretty quick. There's that whole, one area where they talked about making just cremations only, that, none of that has been sold at all yet. So there's that, but there's still, it, it has filled up dramatically in the past seventy, eight years.
Um, can you give us the status update on Clay Hill, in terms of what the status is for that?
He does his, Pete's been doing the, uh, warrant for fencing. We're trying to get someone to go survey it. The goal was to try to get it done very cheaply, and we were trying to get, figuring it would be a good college student project to get a class out there to survey and open field. U N H does not do that anymore, so we're trying a couple other places to see how that goes.
Thanks.
Steven, looking at the numbers that Andy has, it looks like last year you spent everything that was budgeted.
Yes.
Did you spend more and then just?
He needed to spend more, but he ate some of it out of the highway budget. We had to buy fertilizer, so we buy the grub control for the cemetery, so in reality, it doesn't all go in the cemetery, a lot of it goes down at the park too. So it's kind of like one of those split costs, but.
But it's not like, it's not like you should have increased the budget more for actual cemetery stuff.
No, there was, the, the, the thing that maxed his budget out at the very end of the fiscal year was we needed to buy more, um, fertilizer and grub control from Northern Nursery, so we went and grabbed a pallet of it, which is what we do, and then Hillside will come grab the pallet or go into the transfer station where the boxes, take the fertilizer needs, and then he goes and fertilizes the, the park in the, in the cemetery, and he charges like fifty bucks a cemetery to fertilize them, which is.
So this works.
Yeah, technically, we can't fertilize it because we don't have the right license to fertilize stuff, so it saves Gary doing it this way, it saves the town money because he's not marking up the fertilizer and he runs out and he does it for us quickly.
And the lawn mower, is we mow those, right?
Yeah.
So, and then one more broke down, so.
Not that one.
Oh, not that one?
That's the new one that we bought two years ago. We bought a new one two years ago, the, the highway lawnmower that does the park and the other stuff, that's the one that we blew the motor up on a couple weeks ago.
Well, not good, they.
But yeah. Any questions concerning the cemetery? Okay. Who would you like to go next?
You have eleven minutes. Until the possibility of the next.
How you do the highway department is easy. We didn't go crazy in that department either. The salaries that are on there are what the actual salaries are currently with the way the step program and stuff went. So all I did was took their hourly rate times forty and then times fifty-two, so that's every, that's current salary for everybody. Mine was taking, jumped from two years ago to now because it's taken out of the, it's not in the transfer station anymore, it's all in one.
Can you highlight the changes?
Yeah, I'm going to, that's what I was planning on doing. Uh, one of the bigger changes you, you see on this is, um, the grounds maintenance line, that goes from like six to. Oh, this is the old.
Twenty-six?
Yeah, six to twenty-six, so that's that way, and that's a big of a jump. Because we had originally just wanted to add a line called mowing, because we now are, um, like that, the line was originally parks and ground maintenance was, um, just for a little over a park. But we need to mow all of the fire ponds and cisterns in town. They tried this year to take that out of a trust fund to maintain them and it didn't pass the muster, so it's being eaten out of my budget this year. And then we also currently started, well, two years ago, we started roadside mowing, hiring a contractor to come in with the right equipment and be able to go around and mow the sides of the roads. Which we just finished and it's worked out well.
Looks nice to him.
Sorry, we, we're just trying to find because the one that was in.
The one I was looking at was the old one, apparently.
Yeah, because the, it changed, it's in this one. Andy, do you have more of these for fifty?
They asked me and then I said I didn't either, but I assumed it was mine.
Well, Tom laws need something.
That'd be great.
So Steve, are these costs, you have the mowing costs and stuff you're talking about, are they in place else?
Obviously not the right one.
Are these new costs you're incurring?
The fire ponds new cost on the current.
Okay.
The roadside mowing is a relatively new cost, but I did, took it out of the rented hired equipment line last year.
Okay, so that's really a move from one to, that's not an increase.
No, it is, because I didn't decrease the rented hired equipment line. The biggest issue is there's not enough, that line's not funded enough to do everything every year that we need to do rented out wisely. I mean, just a paint, the double yellow lines on the roads in town is, is eight grand a year.
So that's why you moved that in twenty-three?
Yeah, and my goal was to just have a mowing line that way, because I know some members of the, of the board like knowing what they spend it on, so if I said we did mowing and we go out to bid and one company does roadside mowing and all the fire ponds and cisterns, it's, that's the line that it would come out of. If we can't do it that way, um, then it could go back, it could go into rented hired equipment, it could stay in the, in the grounds, but um, we need to maintain the fire ponds, because we've done a lot of fire pond and cistern work this year, the highway department has. We've been at James Farm for a while, that one's pretty much done. Uh, Riverside Farm, the pipe broke underground and we had to dig it up and try to fix it twice because the first time we had flooded out from the groundwater, we didn't have enough pumps to keep up. And we were the ones that ended up going into the tank. Hit Elder Osborne and just pumping the rest of the water out and then cleaning it so the company could go in there and fiberglass it, so we've been doing a lot of, a lot of fire pond work, cistern work, and now we're gonna have to mow them and stuff.
Questions on the, on highway department?
Paving? Are you gonna go for a warrant article again? What are you doing?
Yeah, I was gonna go for a warrant article again. Last year, that was one of the more voted yes warrant articles that we had, so.
What are you asking for?
Same. I did the, we did the math out and it's pretty much gonna be the same across the board. We also did the math to figure out seven years ago when I started to do the amount of paving, that's gonna be three hundred thousand, uh, seven years ago was two hundred and four, so that's how much it's gone up in seven years.
So what is the fifty that's in this one for?
In case they say no on the warrant, it leaves me something to, to have to try, so I could shim a road or, or pave a ditch, trench across the road that we need to do, and then the only other two increases, um, were new equipment tools, I mean, our mechanic retired, we had to buy a lot of stuff this past year, so there was some of that, and then, uh, salt went up a little bit this year. The new, the new price came in, it's a couple dollars higher than it was, which isn't bad considering it was the same price for the past four, so. A lot of our materials we're using are starting to flatten out and stay relatively, um, flat. We've stopped seeing the massive upheaval in prices, at least in what we're doing.
Um, speak to us about the part-time assistant? Because you haven't had that for a while.
Yeah, I know, uh, the guys, the, the two bands have started taking on a lot more and doing stuff, so I don't have to.
So do you, so you're gonna keep the line or are you gonna put that money someplace else or?
A party wants to maybe put it into the part-time on-call wages, I haven't figured it out, and then I can maybe get someone come summertime to do a lot of, to do park and cemetery mowing for us, so we can
Okay, so.
Do more road work, because come the spring and early summer, we don't do as much road work as we should, because we're, the grass is growing so fast that we just can't keep up with what we have.
So can you, when you determine what you want to do, can you update us?
Yeah, I'll figure it out, I'll figure it out before the first public budget hearing.
Thank you.
You decreased your gas line, do you think you actually have to spend less on gas?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Because we got a new pit, we got, we got rid of the, uh, red one time, we got a diesel.
Okay.
That gives double the gas mileage, or double the fuel mileage of the gas that we had, so. And I didn't increase diesel because looking at it over the past couple of years, we really haven't come close to spending the, the twenty we've been relying on the state diesel pumps a lot more. The price at the state pumps is down.
So do you think the twenty's too high?
Uh, the problem is, is if we get a good, good winter, it might not be high enough, but I don't wanna keep it high, you know, you know, I don't wanna raise it and then not have a winter, because I've already lowered it once since I've been here, because we just haven't had.
You haven't had winter?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, that's the same thing with sand, you know, we have.
That's the problem is we cannot spend a lot of money on salt and sand, but if I decrease it, we'll finally get a winter like we did in two thousand and fifteen and it won't be There's a lot of guessing in, in some of these lines because in a lot of what-ifs.
All those stuff.
Yeah.
Anybody else got any questions on highway? Okay. Let's go back and do the agencies and we'll do the, the transfer station and.
Cornerstone.
Cornerstone.
Cornerstone is joining us.
So I have not a lot of stuff, but I don't know if it's just to pass it around. There's two annual reports and then there's mid-year impact reports.
And you're Jennifer?
Yes, I'm Jennifer Ofgren, CEO at Cornerstone V and A.
Welcome.
Thank you. So appreciate the opportunity to meet with you guys tonight. I attended last year and I've, I've been here before, so I'm the new CEO of Cornerstone V and A and with the organization, thank you for twenty-four years. So I'm not new to the organization, just under my role.
I've never seen you before.
Yes, you have seen me. So we do home health, hospice, private duty and palliative care services to individuals of all ages from birth to end of life. We are independent, we are nonprofit, and we do rely on our towns and cities to help with funding to offset programs that do not receive funding or underfunded or non-compensated care for self-pay. In the year twenty twenty-four, last year, we did approximately thirty-eight hundred dollars in uncompensated care for self-pay in the town Lee. And our ask is fifteen hundred dollars. We keep that pretty flat because we know the hardships that are out there with rising costs. But I can tell you, if you guys read the news, healthcare itself is jeopardized. We continue to fight at both the state and the federal level. So reimbursement is a challenge, but we continue to rely on technology and efficient ways to be able to provide care to more people with less. So we've done simulation labs, virtual education and training for our staff. We are very committed to mental health. We, one of our employees is the chair of the Rochester Mental Health Alliance and works with local communities to build up mental health programs, which has been very beneficial to our areas in Stratford County. And anything we can do for specialty services, we try to build programs around that to educate people and their loved ones to be able to self-manage at home because home is where people want to be and out of the hospital. So open to questions if anyone has anything.
Any questions for Jennifer tonight?
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Ready for all you do.
Thank you.
Age response.
Age's response. Tamara?
Hi, everyone, my name's Tamara Lewis, I'm the executive director of Agent Mont Sea Coast. Thank you for taking the time to talk to me today. We are a case management agency. We've been providing services in the sea coast for close to forty years now. So we do direct medical, non-medical and support services for our clients. We serve between three and six Lee residents because it's such a small community, we try not to give exact amounts for HIPAA regulations. We provide enrollment and access to the New Hampshire Care Program, which is a state DHHS program that connects people to insurance, copays, life-saving medications, HIV medications are often four to six thousand dollars a month, obviously prohibited for, for many people. So this program makes sure that everyone has access to the medications and does not have to pay for those, those medications. In addition, we do people on entitlement programs, insurance, Medicare, Medicaid. We help them with SNAP benefits and we do a lot of housing. The majority of our clients, we accept clients up to five hundred percent of the poverty level, but the most are under two hundred percent or even one hundred percent. So that's twenty or even ten thousand dollars for many of our clients. In the last year, we provided over twenty-six thousand dollars for direct assistance in rent and utilities, including six assists to people in the Lee community with things like help with rent, avoiding evictions, fuel bills. We also have a food pantry and our, our clients are able to use our food pantry up to twice a month and we'll also do food deliveries for, for many of our clients. We work really hard to keep our clients as stable as possible and that helps to keep them virally suppressed, which is the key to living healthy with HIV and trying to keep them out of the hospital and out of the welfare offices and as productive parts of the community. What did I forget? Also, we do medical transportation, making sure we get people to the medical clinics and access to psychosocial, mental health, substance use disorder or any other needs we find that people are missing. Can I answer any questions?
In your service area, have you seen the number of people affected by this? Stay the same, up, down?
Yes, interesting. I actually talked to an old director of ours who'd been here twenty years ago and we're serving now around a hundred to a hundred and five clients and she said that was the same about twenty years ago. We're seeing a lot of people aging with HIV, which is a wonderful thing because that wasn't something they thought was possible. So I actually have clients in their sixties, seventies and a few in their eighties, some who've been living with this for thirty-plus years. Unfortunately, we're seeing younger people, in this year especially, it's the most I've seen. I've been with the agency for fifteen years and the director for five, and this is the most new diagnoses I've seen. Most are coming from other areas, but surprising, a surprising amount of young women. So definitely there's no prevention money in the state and so I think unfortunately we're seeing that, that young generations just aren't considering it as an issue for them, which is disturbing, so.
Thank you.
Just one thing I wanted to share is by keeping people virally suppressed, though our clients who already are positive, they cannot pass the virus on to other people. So that's one of the huge goals. We call it treatment as prevention and one of the reasons we work so hard to keep, keep people connected to their medical care medications.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all you do. Hi.
I'm Betsy from CAF and I'm early.
That's okay.
So I, I was on for eight-ten.
That's okay, Betsy.
Oh, okay, are you sure?
Yes.
Okay.
I think there's not a line.
Okay. There we go, this is program books that I brought, people to have, annual report. Maybe are you sure, nothing else to read, we're going to bed tonight? Here we go.
Guessing your world is pretty active at the moment.
It's a little busy, yes, at the moment. I'm sure you care to answer any questions that you have in relation to maybe what's also happening or coming up to help answer like what we're doing to prepare. I don't know, how would you like me to, to start?
If you can just give us a little bit of background of what you do and then how you're dealing with lack of federal support, so.
Oh, perfect, thanks. So thank you so much, I'm Beth Sanders Parker and I've been here before. My, yes, I am the CEO of the Community Action Party of Stratford County. We oversee what's commonly referred to also to the anti-poverty programs here in Stratford County. However, I just want to like clarify that we do a lot and a lot of our programs are really for people who are making like sixty, eighty percent of what they call like adjusted median income. So it's not like what people think of of people like on a section eight voucher or food stamps. Like we actually go beyond that, a lot of folks that are working. So primarily, really actually in our big budget, folks look at us and say like, this does not make an impact, like why would you ask for this money? Having town support really helps us be able to leverage other funding. So to be able to say that all of the municipalities in Stratford County support community action, the total of what it is honestly is like fifty-four thousand dollars. Like it's, it's really a small amount. However, this is what we use when someone says, like so December first, for example, is the start of fuel assistance and heating season, but there are people who are cold right now who need help right now. This is a discretionary money that we use, like those, this is what we use this money for, to support the other programs and fill the gaps for our housing programs that we have here. We also use that to fund gaps. The big one you'll see, and I, and again, looking at this, I was like, wait a minute, what happened in Lee? I forgot. So we do summer meals and that's where we help obviously meet the need in between the summertime. And so we have a location this summer in Lee, it was like very, very well attended for weekly pickups and those things. My summer meals program, because of the cost of food and what gets reimbursed with USDA, we have to fundraise over sixty thousand dollars to fill that gap in there. This is what we use the funding for, so it really stretches across the board. And then all, the other one too is the diaper program. That's a new program that was a pilot program through the Biden administration and then we did so well that this current administration extended our grant for a whole other year. So we're the statewide coordinator for the entire state. We have twenty-one partners helping families meet the needs for diapers and wipes. So that number right there, the twenty-four hundred, that's just for the families in Lee who use that. We've actually done one point four million diapers in the state of New Hampshire with our twenty-one partners, but that twenty-four ninety-six is just diapers and wipes for Lee residents.
That's amazing.
Yeah, you know, it really is because if you, if you don't have diapers, you can't go to daycare and you can't work. You can't do the same. So that was a need of funding the gap that they have and then wipes became the next thing. So it's, it's a great program. But if you, if you want to volunteer do something, I'll have you help pass out diapers. We have, we get a truck that comes full. We also have food to distribute as well, so we have lots of opportunities to pass things out. But those are the two big ones that really changed for us. And then the other one that's also very exciting for us, it's coming up, but I can't wait, is we applied for and we received, fingers crossed, everything goes, an additional bus and bus driver to start the coordinated door-to-door service for shopping. And specifically, we are targeting Durham, Lee and Madberry and Barrington. So the specific was written to cover the rural areas that we have here because one we have now goes north and that's supposed to take effect July of twenty twenty-six. That will be a new route that we will run. So once we coordinate with Coast and we use their alliance for community transportation, so a person can call and say, so I'm guessing the route would probably be the market basket down here. We used to go to the mall when the mall was available and people could walk the mall and those things to get out. But we do, it's shopping, it's shopping to get out. It's usually it's Walmart or a close by. I'm thinking it's going to be the market basket down here, the shopping plaza. So we'll drive up, we'll pick you up at your house, unlike a Coast bus, which doesn't go, it goes to bus stops. This will go to your house, you get out, you get on, you drive, you grocery shop, get back on. A suggested donation for two dollars and it's for anyone sixty-two and older or disabled. That's the new one that we're super excited. And we got a new bus as well that goes with that. So it'll drive all over the place. So that's exciting, if everything comes to fruition. Fingers crossed.
The meals program, is that for kids?
Yep, zero to eighteen. So we provide like baby food, formula for families as well. And then usually it's a, it's a pack of food. So it's, for, for us, we only provide breakfast and lunch. So this was normally in the other areas in the community, you have to go and sit and eat, called a congregant meal, but because Lee was rural, they allow us to do a once-a-week distribution. It was down by Lee-friendly, that's, that's where it happened. It was very well attended, like very, very well attended. And you got food for the week.
But this was school-age kids?
Oh, school-age kids, yes.
It's like to fill in the gaps while schools close?
Correct, yeah, just for the summertime. It's not like end sixty, end sixty-eight hours of hunger, it's not that. This is just for the summertime, it's called summer meals. It's a separate program from all the school meals and after-school snacks and those things.
Wonderful.
Yeah. It's great, it's, it's one of the best things that has helped people stretch their dollars. So other questions? We're about fuel assistance. That's our head start, because you have two families that are, are in early head start, which is wonderful. That program is currently funded through until May thirty, thirtieth, May thirty-first of this upcoming year, twenty twenty-six. So if you hear that there are head starts closing, ours is not closing, but there are a hundred and forty head starts that are going to close in a week because of the federal funding. So ours is not one of them, but we are good until May of next year. Our fuel assistance program, we are currently taking applications. That has not been funded through the federal government, but we are working with the state with some roll over money and we hope it's resolved by December first. So we're again currently taking applications and you can see ninety-two individuals and electric is still going, electric assistance is going to the discount, that still works, but the actual fuel assistance, we're hoping that that is not delayed. We did start doing wood payments right now, so anyone who's listening who needs wood and who want fuel assistance, we will pay our wood vendors now because no one wants to stack wood. I just stacked some wood in between the pouring rain, but we try and get the wood out before it gets really cold or it snows and those kind of things, so the wood's ready to go. So that we're waiting on from the state. If we hear any differently, we will one hundred percent notify the towns if there'll be a delay in that opening because that's going to be an issue.
Are you having any problems because of the government closure? And all this other stuff is, is changes in funding patterns.
Oh, yes, we are having problems because like we have contracts that have not been approved and grants that have been, have not been approved. We know that there are changes coming in our housing programs and housing assistance, but all of that now has been delayed because there's no one at the government. I have a, a senior housing project that I would like to expand and double in size, but I have no one at HUD right now to approve that. So all of the forward movement that we have with programs is not unfortunately happening right now. We're planning for it, we're just waiting for everything to open back up.
Awesome.
How is the housing assistance going now?
Which, which, we have a couple of them, yes.
You had a great program and obviously that ended and for a lot of different reasons and I didn't know how you.
Yes.
Regrouped and.
So the programs that we have right now, permanent supportive housing, that's a program where someone needs permanent case management and gets placed in some place. That program, our coordinated entry, which helps to place people into that program. We have the statewide domestic violence housing program, a statewide human trafficking housing program for people who are fleeing domestic violence, fleeing human trafficking. We also have just our street outreach, which we now have expanded to Rockingham County as well. And we also do just regular rental assistance. All of those programs are being changed at the federal level and we're waiting and so we are expecting a reduction. They're talking about eliminating the permanent supportive housing program. And then there are some other caveats with some of the funding, so we're not quite sure. We're a little concerned with what is going to happen with the funding because the caveats are putting in place. Normally people like, you can't say, well, we're going to house you if you do X, Y and Z. I know what people are saying, well, you should, you know, do X, Y and Z to maintain housing. If it was that simple, everyone would be housed right now. And we don't have places for people to go to recovery, so if they want to go to treatment and then do recovery, we don't have that. We don't have enough childcare spots for people to be able to work and do childcare. And then we just also, like there's going to be, we're really concerned what's happening with Medicaid when that gets cut because that impacts our folks and we know the delay care and BS sucker. And then, but then we're going to lose like seven hundred permanent supportive housing slots in the state of New Hampshire as well, or vouchers and stuff. So we're about to see a big impact. I know that I, we personally were buying a hotel and we're turning into thirty-four permanent supportive housing locations. It was a five-dollar grant and when that grant came out, their requirements that they had for the grant, instead of being ranking, like usually you write a grant and they, they rank you on what it is. And so the top ranking grants get awarded, they pull all the money back for the third time and said the first seven states that reply back and say yes to these five questions will get the money. So it didn't even matter that we wrote it. So we lost five million dollars in funding that I had applications with the Federal Home Loan Bank and that was going to make thirty-four more units. And when we say affordable supportive housing, we're talking rents like between six hundred and eight hundred dollars, which is really where people need to have it. So that's another impact of what happened with us. We turned that money down because we couldn't commit the state to the requirements if they wanted to, plus it's not, it doesn't work what they wanted us to do. Like Sam, like you have to go to mental health treatment, I'd love you to do mental health treatment, I don't have mental health providers, there is no way to get to there. I don't have mental health providers, there isn't a way to get to there. It required the cooperation of federal officials like ICE to come in, which is not all this stuff. So, we, we turned it down.
Are you buying them off now?
So, you're still buying it or?
Nope, we don't, I don't, I, I need six point five million dollars to do all the renovations and the purchase of the motel, so I'm no longer buying it.
What a shame.
Yep. Glad if the town of Lee wants to give me six point five million dollars, I will name it the town of Lee housing development. You can name it whatever you want. But I mean, that's the kind of stuff that we're just trying to do to help meet that need. And we know that rents are becoming astronomical. So, really, this six to eight hundred level is what people are looking for.
And not much available.
Right.
Besides that.
Exactly.
You still have people living in hotels and stuff like that?
We do, but we're no longer able to support them for a long amount of time and those things, but we're really concerned. I mean, we did, like, we just did the Gaffney Home in Rochester, if you're familiar with Rochester. We just, we did that historical mansion. It started off at four point two million, it ended at six point one million. Like, that's the difference. And we had to like gap fundraise in between, which we did, super excited, the place is beautiful. But like, right now, we want to expand to Gaffney two point oh. And then, at Cover Bridge, which is also in Dover, we want to expand Cover Bridge as well. So, it'd be thirty more units at Cover Bridge and twelve more at Gaffney is what we're looking at to do. So, if you know, and I mean this sincerely, if you have any property or things like that that you're looking for, we do, we are always planning and trying to figure out how we can put in housing and do things. And our aim is to do a hundred percent affordable of what it can be, instead of the mixed market rate. It just depends on the size and how many units we're building. We just did twenty-one at Gaffney, which is very, very rigid then. So, we really need to do like thirty is what is optimal. So, that's what we're looking for right now.
Any other questions for Betsy, Danny?
I have a non-cap-related question. I'm trying to remember, you were in charge of the Red Cross.
Oh, my gosh, yes, so long ago. Were you a volunteer with me? I'm so sorry.
No, I wasn't a volunteer.
Was I here asking for money?
Yeah. I thought that was the Red Cross, so I thought I'd ask.
Yeah, I was, I was in the Red Cross in Stratford County, and then we merged over in, with Portwood as well. And then, I was with the Red Cross during nine eleven. And we had a lot of families who were impacted in this area during nine eleven.
We're dating ourselves, I guess.
I know. It was, I, I
I went down that road.
I know, but I really, I, I loved that job. I loved the job and the work and what they did and those things, so I'm always
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. No, I, I, my, my staff were like, we'll go to Lee. I'm like, I like going out, honestly, I really do. I like going out, I like saying thank you to all the work and those things. And it was, it's exciting to see something where there's new programs being added and different things coming in. And so, again, sometimes where there's no hope, there is some hope down there. And we're listening to what people want and expanding out. So, it would be really great if we have a new bus, honestly. It, it, it will be exciting, it really will. So, I'm, I'm excited for that and then what it brings, because it really does help people age in place. That's our huge issue right now, so getting people out.
How old do you have to be?
You're gonna be, you're gonna be sixty-two.
You must qualify.
We qualify.
Wait, we may have written it for fifty-five, actually. I'm not kidding, we may have written it for fifty-five and those things, but having that. But it's, my god, it's super fun, it really is. The buses are, are fun. And it's, it's a nice way to continue to have community as well.
It's social.
Yes, it is social. Awesome. All right, thank you for coming, I appreciate it. I'm so glad it was early, oh, gosh, I hope you guys can open. Thank you.
We've got a couple that aren't here, so. Women Aid was supposed to be here ten minutes ago, I'm thinking they might not be planning on joining us.
Usually, they are.
I know. Let's see, why don't we go back to Steve?
I have created a new password that I can now
Look into the app. Pictures of the kids.
Woo!
Yeah.
I can make it make a nice slideshow.
Steve's pretty slideshow, we get to see it now.
It's a lot of pictures.
Yeah.
We like pictures.
I know.
Show which way?
That's why you do it.
Government buildings next.
Yeah, you might as well skip through, there's, there's buildings now. That's the library.
Is that?
That's fixed, that's, that was the, the renovation.
That was after the renovation? Oh, that was the door then, oh, okay.
Some, they didn't flash it right or something?
Yeah.
No, it was rotten when they put in the new floor. We, the stairs almost fell off, so that's what
So, you had to do that when they, after?
After. We just, we just did it a couple months ago. So, we tried to keep this one as flat as possible. The buildings are in a lot better shape than they were.
You're doing government building?
Yeah. The buildings are in a lot better shape than they were just four years ago. We've done a lot, a lot of work. I guess the biggest, the biggest increase would be to maintenance and renovation, M and R, maintenance and renovation.
Refresh my memory, where's the, where's the well gonna go? At your house.
Let's help that.
No, I know, but where in the numbers is the well going to go?
It's this year.
Is it gonna come out of?
Trust funds, yes.
It's this year, though, not twenty-seven.
But it's a trust fund issue?
Yes.
We know when you make the slides to go over, Steve.
I, I'm just gonna go over this, and then we can go through them and tell them what the stuff is, because I did this, but I don't remember what the next slide is. Yeah, the, the biggest increase would have been in, in M and R. We're doing more. This is one area that I said the highway is stayed flat on, on prices, this has not. The good thing about this budget is all the heating, the heating, I was able to cut, especially for this building, the stuff that we did up, up above us is really actually, it's helped. I mean, I think this year, we were at like half of what the budget was. I think it, it was twenty-two thousand, I think I spent eleven on this building. And it's been that way now for a couple of years, but I've always been afraid to just lower it, lower it, because I was afraid it was a hoax. It wasn't, but we didn't have like cold, cold winters either, so it was
Right, and winter.
It, it was, it was odd, and then the other, hopefully, next year it'll go down even lower, because currently, this building, in order to have hot water, the boilers have to run all summer long. And even before
Huh? It's all off the boiler?
Yeah, there's a tank kinda underneath Eric that is bigger than I am, that has a coil that runs, so that the boilers heat the water inside. It's as old as the building is. So, it's been on the list even before the Energy Committee got a hold of it, to put a tank list down there. And the, we've been in a toss-up between whether it be electric or propane, because we have the propane bottle over there, and the kitchen is all propane. So, it would be a big stretch to run a line and have a propane tank list. But then you gotta vent it, and it's in the middle of the building, so I don't know how that's gonna work. It's That's one of the projects that is probably happening in this budget that we're talking now, if not sooner. The electricity is another one I've been afraid to move around too much, because they'll tell us that they're jacking the rates, and then they lower them, and nothing changes. And I just, some of them have been over, some of them have been under. I've had, like the Town Center has always been over, because of the library using Old Town Hall and, and stuff. Same with the heat up there. The transfer station line is high for electricity, because it's, you know, we have the solar panels on it, but we're paying more for power in that building now than we were before the solar panels were on the roof.
Do we know? It's exciting.
So, here's the problem, is technically, I might not be, but I don't get to keep the credits to pay off the winter lines. They send a check, it goes into the general fund.
Oh, okay.
But I don't see it in my lines to be able to use. And I also pay revision twenty-three, twenty-four hundred dollars a quarter on top of my electric bill to the power company.
We have to pay the generation fees, which come out of Steve's budget, and the profit that we get goes into the general fund. So, it's, when you, revision is sent out to me a couple of times and, and showing me some very complicated spreadsheets that lead me to believe that we're at the very best breaking even, but it doesn't necessarily do Steve's budget any particular
So, like, I, I thought I was gonna get free electricity, that's how it was explained. So, that's why I cut it to essentially the connection fee two years ago, and that wasn't, that wasn't the case.
So, how much do we get for an annual amount for that?
It varies depending on how much the sun shines. We have static costs, well, they're, they're not even static for the generation, because if we generate a whole lot, then our generation costs are up, but our credit is up too.
Can you provide us with how much we've spent in the last twelve months and how much we've got in in the last twelve months?
Yeah, I can surely do that.
Because the, what I always hoped was the co-op would hold it, and then I would pay the electric bill with it in the winter when the solar panels aren't. But as soon as I get a credit bill in the mail, the check's four days behind it. And then, it just goes into the general fund, and it, it doesn't, I mean, it's great, but it doesn't help me on the, on the lines later in the year.
It doesn't help you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What did you, you can move that around, I mean, make it so it's
The reason I'm asking is to find out, okay, so we're spending this, we're getting this, what's the net?
And revision should be able to give me a twelve-month report.
Yeah. Does that physically interest you?
I know it's at least twenty-four hundred or so times
They don't, they don't do that.
For the generation cost.
Just wanna see if it makes any sense to have a solar panel.
If we owned it, it would be way different, but we don't own it.
Yeah, we're in year, what, three?
We're in year three. I forget the total length of the contract.
The, the
You can find it.
The library project that is being talked about or happening, we're owning those, so that will help.
So, after five years, you can own it?
If you want to. We have, we're putting money aside.
We have, have to see what you need to pay to pay it off.
Right, we have a schedule, that we have a little bit of negotiation.
In terms of what it's worth.
But not, but what.
I even suggested to put the meter on the pole at the end of the street. That way, the power included, and it was the two highway buildings, and it was all one. And I would, because I figured that might have been a way to have the transfer station provide the power to those buildings and get around it, but that wasn't, that didn't work out. I looked into it, though. Other than that, I mean, everything stayed the same. We didn't lower electric rates for some of the buildings, because the other thing with this building is we were able to lower some of the electric rates, all the lights that we put the sensors on, and, and everything else has really worked in this building.
Can you speak to the ABC, because we changed how we do maintenance in terms of the service, the cleaning service?
Yeah, there used to be a higher line under the maintenance part-time line, because there were two employees. It was after Kristen left, where they go through two employees that were supposed to be, and it just did not go well. There's a, a family that lives in town that owns a cleaning company. And Karen Rossi put me onto their tail, and we've been using them. So, a lot of the salary to bump it up to the, we took the salary from Kristen and put it into the building M and R line, and they get paid out of that line. So, that line has the building cleanings happening out of it.
And you're still happy with them?
Here and there. I mean, I, my buildings are fine, I can only react off of, if I hear from other people. There are times where they're happy and times where they're not. But it's a lot easier to say something to them than it is someone that you look at every day and, and talk to, so.
They're about four thousand dollars a month.
Yeah, and they approached me, because they, they approached me the other day, because technically, I don't think they have a contract with them. And they cleaned Bellamy Fields in Dover, the retirement home, but it just got bought. And they were told they were no longer needed overnight, because the new company that bought them has their own cleaners. So, they were essentially just looking for something that, you gotta give them more notice than tomorrow type thing.
Yeah, we're, we're month-to-month with Bellamy.
Yeah. That's what, that's what he asked about, and I said, give me something to present. So, that's where we own them right now.
So, who's in maintenance wages? That's just one, is that one person, is that a part-time person?
That's Jeff, one person.
Full-time?
Part-time.
Part-time, is he part-time anyplace else, like does he work at the transfer station?
No, thirty hours a week.
Okay. He lives in town?
Yeah, yeah, he's a, he's a town taxpayer, he lives on Tamarack. He does a really good job.
I had a conversation with him at the election.
Yeah, I think, I think he does a really good job. I haven't heard anyone say otherwise, he's, he's handy. I mean, that work right there, he did all that on the library. And we can move forward through. So, yeah, these are some of the projects we're gonna have to do out of the M and R budget. That on the left is the, that's a concrete block wall by the dumpsters in the transfer station. And they're twenty years old, and the bottom blocks have tilted, so the wall keeps trying to fall over into the dumpsters. And we took them down and restacked them, that was last year. But we're gonna have to take them out and like redo them, redo them, and put in new blocks.
Is that our excavator?
Yes.
Can we get it?
It doesn't, it doesn't have that on it.
Oh, Farrell's come on.
Oh, yeah, that picture's old. And then, the picture on the right was the hottest day of the year in the ceiling above this building after the pan wouldn't drain, and you guys had a shower during a select board meeting.
There's still some water station.
You did.
But that's Jeff, so Jeff was the one that was up there doing, trying to put a new pump in, in the pan.
Nice work.
It was, it was not nice up there that day. And then, like, these were the electric heats, that's, that's the crack in the waste of furnace in the heat exchanger in the transfer station, we just replaced that. So, like, the picture in the middle, that's when the ceiling fell. And the one on the left is the actual pump that we put in, and then right is the library. And then, that's the hobo shed getting the side stripped off for the light paint. And we did highway already, so you can skip through.
That's February.
Yeah, that's, I, me taking
It was built in February.
Yeah, you skipped through, that was just like mowing up. That was, I was in the, just starting on Elder Osborne looking up.
You got a ladder in there?
There is, there's a ladder built in.
You can get out.
That's Tulane, that was mowing with the private thing, that was taken like a week and a half ago. Yeah, our salt shed broke, we had to fix it, and then more mowing, the stuff that happened over the year and the stuff that we've done. Oh, that's the destruction of one of the dump trucks, Pete's old dump truck, that we had to scrap when we got the grant for the two new ones.
You didn't get a picture of the tear in his eye when that was
There was no tear.
No tears?
No, he was happy. Now, there's some
We didn't just grab it?
I don't, we applied for a diesel grant through DES for part of the Volkswagen money. And we got two brand-new dump trucks with plows and wings, and we got one spreader, it cost the town ninety-seven thousand. The grant was for like four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. So, but part of doing that, we had to destroy those.
We physically, we physically had to do
Yeah, so we, we, they had to cut the frame, but we had to cut holes in the engine block and stuff to them too.
I just wanted to make sure you couldn't sell it again.
Pretty much.
We had residents that were vulturing around wine parks.
Oh, I'm sure
You know, they're stripped, that truck has no axles left on, because we, if parts that were decent on it, another town could use, or a resident in town could use, they took them, because they were gonna get destroyed if we didn't. That's really the next slide. Those are the new, those are the new Those are the new, those are the new trucks.
The Harries?
That, that was at Harries.
Oh, that was, okay.
And then those are the, those are the new ones. That was paving, that was New Town Plains Road. We had a lot of, we had to pave driveways, we had some, as you can see how much hot top we had to put in some of them. We had some bad, bad areas up there that we had to take care of, and they're done, and no complaints, so Continental did a really good job this year. And then that's the two pictures on the left are Riverside Farm and that's the finished product on the way left, the, one in the middle is when we went swimming, when the groundwater was still too high. And then the one on the right, that's inside the tank on Elder Osborne. That's more fire, more sister fire pond stuff.
You said that doesn't come out of the trust fund, so it comes out?
That stuff did, the mowing doesn't. And then the one on the left is that's James Farm, that's a new structure that we had put in, so the, the pipe would drain, and then the one on the right is the upright at Riverside that the bottom forty-five was broken, and the fire department was stuck in air, and they couldn't keep a draft, a lot of the pipe wasn't, it was primed, but it wasn't glued, you could pull the pipes apart when we got into it. And then, this is, that was equipment repair, so the one on the left is just a cracked plow frame that we welded, the one on the right's the blown-up motor, that plastic gear on the right's the oil pump, and it lost a tooth and shredded. And before once you heard the ticket, it was too late, it seized up at the park, and we spun all the bearings in the, in the motor. That motor had twenty four thousand or twenty-four hundred hours on that hour meter, it probably had three times that on it. It was twenty years old, so it it didn't owe us anything, it lived a good life, we put a new one in for thirty-four hundred bucks. And all mowed for, and has a warranty, we looked at just rebuilding that one, but it was, it wasn't gonna be cost-effective. And then, this is some of the new equipment we had to get after Pete left, we were able to buy a computer for all the trucks. Ben is a lot more technically advanced than Pete, Pete, Pete was, or is, I shall say. The one in the middle, we bought our own hose press to make our own hydraulic hoses, so we don't have to pay someone else to do it, and at two AM in a snowstorm, we can get back up and running a lot faster, and then the one on the right's a TIG welder, and a MIG welder, and a stick welder, since Pete took, all the, the welders that we have at the highway department are Peter's, not the town's. So that was like one of the first things we had to go buy when he retired, was our own welder. The white truck is the new one-ten we got. We 3D print things at the shop now, so the new nine-one-one numbers or letters, numbers, that are, at the town center, we 3D printed all those, and we've been 3D printing some stuff, that isn't the town's, Ben Allen is the owner of that, but we've been 3D printing things for town, and that's just another picture of the new truck. That highly work, using the hammer and the excavator. That picture on the left is the state invasive species coordinator, and that is us spraying knotweed on Steppenstone's Road in the right of way, he does that for us as a courtesy, you don't have to pay for it, so. This ditching, and the one on the right with the student driver sticker is the pad for some of the dudels that O.R.A. built the town. Then transfer station. So the thing on the, we started, I'm just gonna, we started composting all our own food, and we started composting food in January, we started a hundred percent on our own July one, and that long pro on the right is a compost monitor that they could stick three feet into the pile and be able to tell how hot it is. For it. Transfer station didn't really go up much at all, it was trying to keep everything as flat as possible, because it just felt like that's what we needed to do. Again, the salaries are what they're making with all the math out, and that's essentially was, is the only difference in, in the two lines. But I guess, do, you have any questions on government builders, did we even get that part?
Do they want any questions on any of the covered?
No.
Visuals are working.
Yeah. Yeah, keep it as flat as possible, I, we just, this line is doesn't have as much up and down as it used to, because we've taken heat and the electricity and all that other kind of stuff out of it.
How about, how about the tonnage for bulky waste, for, I mean, for solid waste? How much are we paying per ton for?
We'll go here.
Solid waste, yeah.
So the lamprey, I think currently right now it's eighty-seven, there's the current price. Or no, it's eighty-four, it goes to eighty-seven January first, but three dollars and fifty cents also gets added on to it January first, so we're paying ninety, fifty. And that's in the budget we're currently in, that extra three fifty is not taken into account in any lines that I have, cause it was forced in on HB two, the trailer bill, maybe SB two, I can't remember to the, to the budget. It was put in on the trailer bill on the budget at the State House. And it makes it so every ton of trash going into a solid waste facility, and the state has a three dollar and fifty cent per ton charge on it.
Why didn't you put it in the budget?
It's in the one here, but it's not in the one I have now, that we're currently...
Oh, I see, I see.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
I can submit a form quarterly to get refunded, our three fifty, because we're a Hampshire municipality. Massachusetts cannot, it was a way to get around the interstate commerce clause to essentially tax Massachusetts for bringing the trash into the state. The good thing about the three fifty is after we get ours back, it'll pull almost all of the solid waste bureau in DES out of general fund, and that fund will pay for the entire program at the state. And there'll be money left over for grants, for fifty-fifty grants for towns to apply for. So like, when a compactor comes up, and it needs to be replaced, you can apply and it'll be a fifty-fifty grant with DES for, so it helps. It's, the quarterly stuff's behind, like, I can't submit our first request for reimbursement until like July, because they need to get it, have it, and, and do it, but the, the form's fairly easy, we just need to keep track. I need to keep all the bills, and, and I need canceled checks, but that's a tailor and Andy thing, cause I have to send that, cause I have to prove I paid it in order to get it back to the state.
When we get that back though, the money's gonna go in the general fund.
Correct.
So we have to make sure we're still accounting for it, that's why this is increased, I assume, so much, for accounting for you having to pay it out at first.
Yeah, in, in reality, it's like four grand a year, four and a half, five grand a year, something like that, depending on what we send, the only thing I do not know is it, it doesn't count daily cover, so like blast, it doesn't affect, but what I don't know is if they're gonna count the bulky waste, the construction, the wood that goes up there, sometimes they use that as daily cover, sometimes they don't, and I haven't been able to get a definitive answer if that's gonna count toward it or not.
The reimbursement's gonna be like six months after I have it. Which is gonna spread over fiscal years as well. Wages. Operator went up and the clerical went to zero.
There never was clerical in there ever.
I didn't think so, but...
A series of miscellaneous charges that I have to put keeper, distribute to the appropriate places.
Oh, okay. So net, the, the total's about the same as we're budgeting. Why is M and R down so much? From what we spent this year? The equipment? Maintenance and repair, when you spent twenty-five and your budget was fourteen?
Oh, we had money left floating around between all the budgets, and we bought a whole bunch of hydraulic oil to change all the oil and all the equipment. That's not an every year, that's like an every five-year expense, and if I can pinch the pennies to find it somewhere, that's what I try to do, so I don't wanna raise it that much and then lower it that much year to year, so, especially where it's not a it's not an every-year occurrence type thing.
How much impact on the budget has moving from Mr. Fox to our doing the composting?
Nothing.
I didn't think it did, okay.
I mean, it might have a little bit, but it's not gonna show in anything here, it might be fifteen hundred, two grand a year, something like that, maybe.
Are you getting good participation for it?
I think so. I, I, I don't, what I don't know is how many people know that we're actually doing it ourself now, cause when you go out back and look, it doesn't look like anything's changed from before to now, and that was kind of the whole point. So no one could tell the difference.
Like, where, is, is there a sign or whatever that says that's where they dump it, or?
I, they...
Or they dump it in the same spot?
They, they're putting them in the same, but it was Mr. Fox to now, it's in the exact same spot, in the same type of bin, so no one is... no one's, none the wiser that we've switched, and that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
I've asked a couple people, and they look at me like I've got horns.
They don't know.
They don't know.
Like, nothing's changed as far as they know.
They don't know, and they don't particularly care.
I can tell you that after like two and a half weeks, you can't even tell that there was food put in the leaving yard waste to, to compost it, it disappears that quickly with how hot it gets.
You just mix it?
Yeah, Chip, Chip took it all on his own, and he wanted to do it, approached me and said he wanted to do it, and I said, go for it. When we ended our relationship with Mr. Fox, it wasn't, um like, they're not mad, I mean, they want people to compost, they should be happy, but it's left in a way that if it doesn't work out, if something happens, we can call them and go back to them, no problem.
Good. Any questions for Steve on transfer station or any of his other budgets?
And then that's Larry cleaning the wall, and no one's seen it yet really, but that's the, we redid the volunteer sign at the center of town, and that's what it looks like.
Oh, yeah.
Love it.
Are you ever going to go, cause I know you've talked about it, in terms of the plastics, in terms of doing the other plastics, was it five, seven, and whatever?
Yeah, we gotta, we're trying to figure it out, and space is the problem. Space is the big problem, cause you have to store so much of it to make one bale, that we don't really have the room to store it all, but it's...
I get that question from Ben.
What about the papers, you were doing something with the paper too, like?
We've tried a bunch.
Newspapers, like...
Yeah, we're still doing newspaper, we'll take newspaper, we're just going in with the mixed paper, we don't make enough bales to make it worth taking up a spot, like, I only make like three newspaper bales a year.
But right now, there's still newspaper there.
Cause we're putting it there, cause we don't have any use for that bin yet that we can do, and a lot of people like going into that bin and pulling all the coupons out of it, so.
Oh, okay.
We're, there's, there's people that go in there weekly to get coupons out of the, the...
Out of the papers, yeah.
Yeah.
Wonderful, wow, wonderful.
So we've been, we've been, the one thing I will say is we're at like fifty-six thousand made in there this year, and markets are good, but like thirty-five of it's just off aluminum cans. We made a lot of money off aluminum cans this year.
The rest of it?
Like, the, the last shipment was a partial load to Harries, and we made sixteen thousand on, on, on aluminum cans.
How is the credit card thing working? People happy, or is it not being used, or?
Oh, we use it like ten times one week, which was a record, but that was it, and now we're back to like two or three.
Well, it costs you money if you use it.
Yeah.
It's an extra two dollars if you're paying that way.
It's a convenience.
Yes.
Make sure you bring a pack.
I, I went to, you know, like, yeah, I was a big cash now, or whatever, stick it in the thing.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
My apologies for the late start to your graphics. That's fine.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
And who do we have here?
Jesse from Haven.
Okay, welcome, Jesse, please join us.
Nice to see everyone, Jesse Gildejav's Madberry neighbor. I'm passing around just for fun, so you can see where we're at in building project, the request this year has nothing to do with a building project for our future and permanent home for Haven after our forty-six years, but I thought you'd like to see in this draft form some renderings of what's to come in the next couple of years. So, thanks for having us out, and thanks for considering our request. As always, we really appreciate the support, the town of Lee, and collaborating with all of Oyster River through our prevention education programs and all of our client services that we provide twenty-four seven to individuals that have experienced trauma caused by domestic violence and sexual assault. Some twenty-five hundred individuals last year throughout the seacoast area, about forty-nine here in Lee, about the same number as served in Durham, a smaller number in the tiny town of Madberry. And our prevention education program presentations reached about three hundred and fifty-eight students, K through twelve students in Lee, or elementary students actually in Lee, and then total for Oyster River going up in the middle schools, about thirteen hundred last fiscal year with our prevention education programs that help teach youngsters how well, how we can prevent violence from happening in the first place. As I mentioned, we're rolling out a capital campaign so that we can finally establish a hub for Haven that's gonna bring a new model in what we're calling transition housing, emergency shelter is what we've always called it, but this is a new model called building dignity, where survivors, victims, and their children will have a place to go that's co-located, seven units co-located with our programs, so they don't have to shuttle between an undisclosed area to get from there to our advocates in our Portsmouth site or our Rochester site, everything eventually at the new Portsmouth hub will be co-located, which is a wonderful new model, because it also, when you think about it, brings victims and folks looking for a healing and safe place out from the shadows and onto Main Street where they can find a safe and healing environment that we've always provided. And I mentioned the capital campaign, because while we're doing that over the next two years, we're also operating our everyday twenty-four seven services, so kind of doubling on what we need to be doing, making your support ever more needed, because unfortunately, especially as economic circumstances you know, are, are more difficult for folks, violence, you know, doesn't go away, and there's no boundaries in terms of socioeconomic status and other demographic differences. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about current operations or the new project, it's due to be underway.
Any questions for Jesse tonight? Anything we're all set?
All right.
I appreciate your coming over.
We want to see you guys, thank you. Appreciate what you do for the residents of Lee, I don't know how late you have to stay here, but hopefully not too late.
I can address the youth services assistant if you might.
Okay.
Just for the last several years, this is a...
Just um for the last several years, uh this is a town of extremely fun, um that is overseen primarily by, I, I would say the recreation commission, but it, it's pretty much Karen Rossi. And we've put two thousand dollars a year in it, do the best intentions, and I think the most we've spent in a given year is four hundred and thirty dollars, and Karen and I had to really tilt the people's arm to take the money. So I just reduced the amount to five hundred dollars this year. Board committee see a need to keep that where it's at, you can surely put it back, but uh I think the, the highest amount we had spent was four hundred and thirty-two dollars, uh that was for Boy Scout dues uh for a family with a large number of boys and Boy Scouts.
Oh, okay.
What is this?
It's the, it's the last one.
It's the last one, the last.
The one here that was at two thousand.
And essentially, the, the line is sort of born of when we, we sponsored Oyster River Athletics, uh in a in a healthy fashion, and I know some bunch of committee members and some select board members thought that um we should have funding available for children that were doing other activities beyond athletics, and, and that's where it came from.
The, the only thing that I would want is if, we leave it at five hundred, if the need becomes more that we still service that.
Yep.
Uh, and it's for people who cannot afford those particular fees and stuff.
Was that, did we do that for ORYA and so forth too, or is that something, that's what it was, we first did that.
That's how I had those discussions.
Yeah, so
Cause we stopped funding them, but we wanted to make sure that we helped lead residents if they needed assistance for any of that.
Yep, that was the idea.
The former director of ORYA had offered to oversee the fund if we wanted to set aside a certain amount for Lee and that sort of fell by the wayside as he moved on and the new um management was not as interested in, in working with us on that, so we had just our own fund.
So
Yeah.
There's been some, some turnover in that job at ORYA, I think we might have a better response today than we would have six months ago.
So this has been two changes in that position?
Are they coming?
They are not.
Okay.
We didn't, we didn't fund them.
Didn't fund them for a while. In terms of our budget, our agenda for tonight, uh Oyster River Women Aid did not come, and Stratford County Wheels on Wheels did not come.
And Waypoint?
Awaypoint we knew wasn't coming.
Oh, we didn't know.
We knew they were, they were not being represented, and I know the two were on the agenda, um
Yeah, the Wheels on Wheels lady retired, didn't she?
The one that has always been here, was gonna retire, so that's a new, that would have been a new person to ask that.
I have their background information, I think Denise said it once, but it was quite a while ago, I can resend their uh presentation information that they sent us, if you'd like.
Are they still requesting?
Same, same amount, we've seen them forever and they, they're
For years.
The one that I wanted to mention was, last year we gave Women Aid of Oyster River a thousand dollars. This year they're requesting five thousand, the curiosity is that they said we gave them five thousand last year, which we did not.
No, it's, it's the amount we Oh, you're right, it's just
So last year they also gave twenty-five hundred to the school district and fifteen hundred to the food pantry, and I'm thinking maybe they lumped that in with the other money, but we did not give them five thousand unless we gave them a thousand.
If they asked for four thousand last year, you gave them a thousand, and this year they're asking for five thousand.
But they, I didn't want people to be confused by the fact that on the quest form, it says we actually gave them five thousand, I should have so So that was, I'm assuming the other two are not coming, so the
Well, I don't know.
We have two choices here.
Too bad.
We have two choices here, one is that we adjourn, the other is we can turn the we can dismiss the select board and continue an internal discussion. I leave it to your judgment.
Not mine.
It's not my choice.
Either way, I'm leaving, so. Well, I'm listening to my internal discussion and um
It's a public meeting.
Otherwise we're adjourning, like, so either way. Feels very little like it's affected on my life. I vote whatever makes Tom have.
Does anyone have any items they want to discuss internally tonight?
No.
I don't really want to, but I'm willing to.
We're like, a half an hour is probably not a very meaningful time frame, especially at eight-thirty at night, so I would be of the mind to postpone that discussion for another night.
I think that's a good choice.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn the ABC and turn it back over to the select board.
Motion to adjourn, oh, oh, we don't have the motion, we can just second now?
You can move it. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Anything you two want to discuss? You two okay?
I think he made the statement.
Andy?
I have uh nothing to add, except that I, I will have complete budgets for you fairly shortly, there's a couple of big pieces missing, that's why I haven't uh put them out yet, but um now that I've got Steve's budgets, I have, uh my budget is ready to go into formal form, and as soon as I get the fire department I will have complete budgets for you and get those to you.
Uh, anything updated in terms of setting the tax rate? I know you were looking into it for me.
No. Uh, right now, the auditors have not done their file report, pretty much everything is in place, I have to have the select board sign some financial forms over again on Monday because, although we did them once in the spring, because we had a special town meeting been determined that I have to do it over again, so.
Cause you're missing, what, the five thirty-five and what the
We need a new five thirty-five, uh did the which they've got and is pending, um and the four thirty-four revenues have gone in, uh I think there's a two thirty-two that needs to be signed by the
Three, two. Yeah, the people are just dying to find out what their tax rate is.
Absolutely.
I've been courting to mark the basket.
Will you just stop?
I try, I go to Epping, but they get me there too.
It's gonna stay flat because we didn't fund the rebound, so.
We didn't.
He's being sarcastic, he's being sarcastic.
All right, nothing else?
No.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Sorry.
Ooh, they're getting better. Oh, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I motion pass.
The only other thing Scott was, are we gonna have the tax point, uh the town court come back to discuss their amended?
She did send me some revised numbers.
She said some revised numbers, but I don't know if you want to make a presentation.
I can certainly tell her she needs to come back if you'd like.
Do you have the information?
I do have her revised numbers.
We have the revised.
You should have too.
We should leave the room.
We should leave.
Can I go home and go to bed? Okay, we're meeting my expectations for what coming to be a month, so, so far so good.
So now, when do I get my
I need to know where that she is.
I wanted to apologize to you for the last meeting. I should, I should have done that.
So now, like
You're done?
Oh, man. And then I made a, I made a whole place for the library, did you go?
Is there anything you can do besides that part?
I made the kids' library.
The sweat opened up my neck, Steve came in with that this today and we tried it in my office, it worked fine and I brought it up here and tried it, and then when I went in there, I realized because of the power surge.
This week's a big one, so.
Account, so
You know, I, I remember I can't believe I missed it the one time.
No, I think it's internal, like, no one will be here.
Finally got through on the night grid because I know Steve was so happy that he had power point and the town administrator came to put it on the law form.
What do you mean Halloween day of?
I couldn't be too far from my
Okay, good.
I'll be right back, you should shut the microphones off.